At this time, we are going to go into that section where we talk to the Live King descendants and their testimony. So at this time, Dr. Fakunlay will lead us into that transition.
Thank you, Dr. Stevenson. So as he mentioned, we now want to take this time within our hearing session to acknowledge the descendants of Matthew Williams. So at this time, we will be presenting a video, a collection of their oral testimonies. Again, this is from the descendants of Matthew Williams.
What I consistently hear about him is that he was a great, you know, young 20 something year old kid, you know, who cared about his family deeply, didn't pursue more education to work several jobs just to help his mom and other family members, help the household out, always be more on the respectful end, more reserved and more of a, you know, introvert. He didn't do what the crowd did, more, you know, let his own way to be respectful. What is consistently said about him is his decency. So definitely a little different than the average young adult. He looked like he was a sharp dresser though. So I love looking at those old pictures. I mean, just sharp though. I'm like, who is 21 going to work suit, crisp white shirt, tie, and then these cute brimmed hats? Sharp dresser. Yeah. But 21, 22, that's amazing to me. It sounds like I'm talking about current times, which is insane. Not knowing whether you're going to make it back home just to make, you know, a few dollars or coins possibly, to know that you at any moment could be, you know, lunch beaten shot all day, every day in your own community. I mean, that had to be horrifying.
My mother talked about the lynching, which is a horrible word. I mean, it just makes my skin crawl. And talked about the fact that he had been her patient the day before. And after she got off, she was going to be off for a day. They were only off infrequently, but she, her brother came down from Laurel and took her up to the farm for the day. And they were going to be coming back to Salisbury that night. But somewhere along the line, before they left, they got a phone call of what was happening in Salisbury. And of course, my mother, you know, indicated my uncle was hot to trot to go to Salisbury to see what's happening. And my mom was just sickened when she found out, you know, what had happened. And I heard the name, the nurse who was actually on duty, that name is still indelible in my mind.
What's the name?
The nurse's name that was on duty with him that night or had him was Mary Massey Hitch. And I never knew anything about her except that she hid in the linen closet and made no effort to defend him. And my mother, my mother was a feisty little five foot one, five foot two.
She would have been in there fighting, yeah.
She'd have been in there with all arms flailing. But this lady was afraid. And my mom, you know, always emphasized that this man was innocent. She said, you know, he was accused of killing the boss, but actually it was the boss's son who committed the murder.
It was, you know, Kirk here in Salisbury, and it was a Friday night. I believe it was December 4th, if I'm not mistaken. And he was closing up the store and began to leave the store. And he heard this mob as a frightful thing, this mob of men. It was very unusual, a Friday night, you know, here they're coming down, coming down towards the town square. And they were loud and abusive. They were trying to get my dad to come with them. Come on, we're going to... No idea what they said, but you can imagine what it was. And scared him. He was able to kind of duck into the alleyway and go back to where he lived. But he told me about it, you know, what happened the next day and what they did to, you know, the crime that they committed. And I guess it had something that just stuck in his mind.
It was one store later, a little store on the corner, grocery store. And it was Broad Street and Church Street. At that time, they were divided, and there was a line of houses between them. And I went to a church that was sitting on it, made to go up the hill on Popple Avenue, First Baptist Church, that's where we grew up. And next to that, there was a bicycle shop where these children used to rent bicycles for 25, 25 cents a day. Next to that was stores on the take of funeral home. Across the road to that, it was a doctor. At that time, when I was about 14, it was a building there where this man shoot horses. And I used to cry because I thought he was hurting them. Yeah, I thought he was hurting them. The street that we lived in on, Popple Avenue, where most of the black people was in, all took themselves in the community because we were, you know, it was really segregated there. And on Popple Avenue, the whites was on one side and blacks on the other side of the street. Back in that day, we had TVs with a home battery, no electric, and had no electric. A lot of us didn't have no electric.
So the whites had electricity?
Yeah. And we got it, we used a pump in the house to pump your water, but one or two of them whites had that. And then next, that was a highway funeral home, the east would be there too. A drug store, and then it was on down. Yep. They tore down the string of houses that were dividing the street. Wasn't no highway. It was Church Street and Broad Street, the houses between it. Yeah.
And did they tear down your house as well?
Yeah. We had a four bedroom house. They tore that down. They tore the whole line down.
So whenever the city tore down the house, were they paid for the home? Did they give them anything for it?
No.
No, I'm just hoping that, you know, someday that they will acknowledge that that was wrong and to acknowledge his name as being lawfully lynched and prosecuted. I think it's always great to communicate feelings. That is the beginning of any type of evolution. But until laws and systems are redone, it will remain.
How do you want your children and the future descendants of your family to remember Matthew Williams?
As someone who worked hard, most importantly, did right by his family and his community, and had dreams and aspirations of possible entrepreneurship. And then that, you know, today is one of the brightest, not only American, but human dreams, you know, to own and flourish and be happy in your own space, whatever that looks like.
Right.
So, you know, that would be it.
The commission is grateful for the stories that were shared. And at this time, we do have another story to share on behalf of Jeanne Jones, one of the descendants of Matthew Williams. So at this time, I would like to call up Ms. Amber Green of the Phoenix Youth Project to present this statement on behalf of Jeanne Jones. Thank you.
Hello? Okay. So Ms. Jones was not able to make it, and she asked that Ms. Amber Green read it on her behalf.
The early days of coronavirus pandemic in 2020 had already turned out to be quite a roller coaster ride. Then I got a call from my cousin on my father's side who had received a call from Dr. Charles Chavis, a history professor at George Mason University, who believed that I might be related to a young man who was lynched in Salisbury, Maryland in 1931. Knowing that relatives sometimes get things crossed up, I wanted to follow up with Dr. Chavis myself to see what he had to say. I was forwarded his phone number, and I requested that he send me the geological information that he had compiled. Upon reviewing the family tree, it became clear that Matthew Williams Handy was my relative. Initially thought to be on my father's side, however, a closer look revealed that this 23-year-old young man was a distant cousin on my mother's side. His aunt, the woman who helped raise him, Mrs. Addie Black, was my great grandmother. Working for years as a professional in broadcast radio and TV, I have reported and heard about many kinds of heinous incidents in the United States, but I had never expected to find my family history among them. To this day, I remember my mother, Carolyn, and my grandmother, Rachel, discussing memories and some secret details about the history of the eastern shore of Maryland. It seemed like centuries ago, but only 90 years had gone by. Reading the interview of Addie Black, or Grandma Addie, as we called her, left my emotions raw. I read about other lynchings that seemed to dominate the deep south, but this happened in Maryland, the so-called Free State. I live in Los Angeles, where I'm a journalist, media personality, producer, and director, but nothing in my professional experience prepared me for the content of this book. The system of silence ran even deeper than I could have imagined. After reading a newspaper article where my great-grandmother Addie described young Matthew's character, I can see clearly he could well have been considered a decent citizen. He dropped out of school as a young teen to work to help support his family. He was thrifty and avoided the wrong crowds. If this could happen to him, it could happen to anyone. When I think about my loved one whose life was cut down, I cannot help but be reminded how this type of activity continues today and summarily goes unpunished. Matthew Williams did not receive the justice he deserved. The legal system failed him, as it has also failed so many today who have lost their lives at the hands of police, who should have protected them according to their professional vows. The detailed day-by-day and point-by-point account of the horrific lynching of Matthew Williams is rare, but as to reveal truth, it is necessary, no matter how painful it is to me or the descendants of other individuals involved. Dr. Chavis has done us an all great service, but what is particularly important is how this case is handled from this point forward and how it sets a precedent for the way other similar cases, the more than 6,000 recorded lynchings in the United States, are researched, investigated, and addressed by the justice system. Along with the election of President Joe Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris, this book will usher in a new day in seeking equality in the justice system and rooting out systematic racism in the nation. I am not proud of this history, nor am I proud that this happened to my relative, but I am proud of the profound effect it undoubtedly have on the American conscience, or as President Biden says, on the restoration of the soul of America. This is from Tracy, Ms. Jeanne Jones, Los Angeles, California. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green, for sharing Ms. Jones's words. So now we will transition to that portion of the hearing session that focuses on expert testimony about the legacy of racial terror lynchings here in Waukesha County and beyond, along with the recommendations for a path forward. So again, we will call up our expert witnesses one at a time. We will give them the opportunity for them to share their insight, and then I will invite members of the commission to ask any questions that they may have, any feedback they may have after each testimony. So with that, and I also want to say, if there is any additional testimony that people would like to enter into the record, please feel free to reach out to us at the conclusion of the hearing session. And then also, please share that testimony at mltrc@maryland.gov. That is the official email address of the commission in the best way that we can keep track of your information so that it can be officially entered into the record of this work. So with that, I would like to first recognize Ms. Amber Green, leader of the Phoenix Youth Project, to present her testimony. Thank you.
You would think I would be used to a mic by now. I'm here today to share what I believe should be the next steps for moving forward. When we talk about the lynchings that happened on the lower shore, and specifically in Waukesha County, we cannot allow ourselves to ignore what's currently happening in our county. And I just want to take back to something that's raw and real because I just witnessed something yesterday at our Third Friday. And a lot of people, I think the first thing we have to work on is education. Yesterday during Third Friday, which is a regular event for the city of Salisbury, where we have community vendors and everyone come out, in front of the lynching memorial sign that's now there on the plaza where the place where Matthew Williams was located, the fire department had a table in front of that lynching memorial promoting what they're working on. Now, I could easily just be upset and say, wow, that's very disrespectful. But I also have to think, maybe they just don't know. Maybe they just aren't aware. And I think at that point in time, we have to get over the fact that maybe people just don't know, and we kind of move forward. And so when we look at the fact that our county right now has a lot of disparities, we have disparities within our housing, we have disparities within our healthcare, we have disparities in our education system, we have disparities within our local detention center. Currently, right now, youth, young youth, are street homeless. Our organization with Phoenix Youth Project is the only organization on the lower shore that provides direct services to adolescents and young adults who are homeless. That includes street homeless youth. And currently, right now, there is no shelter on the shore that will take a minor in. And when we look at the data, who are our homeless youth? Their black kids, their LGBT youth, their trans youth, their pregnant teens. They are the ones who are overrepresented. And when we look at our justice system, who are the ones who are mainly seeing behind bars? Our black youth, our LGBT youth, our trans youth. It's the most vulnerable population, and we can't afford to say, oh, we just didn't know. And so when moving forward, we have to, one, prioritize education. Right now, I was just working with young people in our drop-in center, and they said, Ms. Am, when you get to middle school and high school, they don't talk about black history. I asked them if they knew that Frederick Douglass spoke here in downtown Salisbury in that courthouse to raise money for Chipman Cultural Center. They told me, or they asked me, what's the Chipman Cultural Center? That's a problem. That's a serious problem, and it's not enough for just me or other young adults to really push that forward. We have to have systematic change, and we have to push that education in our schools. We can't afford to allow people who want to be in control to say, oh, that's not allowed, or that's too personal, or people at home should teach this. It's our duty to make sure that the young people know exactly where they come from because they will have no idea where they're going. And so today, what I really want to push is that we have to focus on education, but we can't stop there because after we educate, you have to do something. And there are some concrete things in Waukesha County we can do. For one, we can make sure that people still have plumbing and electricity in Waukesha County because right now, in 2022, we have individuals living without plumbing and electricity in Waukesha County. We have people living in Waukesha County that does not have paved roads. We have houses being brought down that are torn down and being ignored. And if you want to know where those locations are, Maradona, San Domingo, the first black settlement in the eastern shore, history. And we are letting it go by. We are letting it rot, and our county council members are allowing it to rot. Our state officials are allowing it to rot, and we ask ourselves why. And the answer that is given to us, well, we didn't know. That's a cop-out. And I'm tired of this area copping out, and we have to challenge that. So this is the first step. The first step was getting young people to talk about it. The University of Maryland Eastern Shore is my home place. I am a hawk till I die. And I didn't know and truly understand or respect my own culture until I left Washington, DC and came to Princess Anne, and I could not ignore the education that was being put forth in front of me. The sense of knowing is not just Harriet Tubman, it's not just Frederick Douglass, but it's people like Gloria Richardson, it's people like Shaney Shields, it's people like so many individuals and leaders who are in our community who have not been quiet but have been very loud, but because as time go by, they're easier to ignore. That's why we have to get the young people involved. So when Phoenix Youth Project decided to work with young people, we wanted to get the community together and educate them. And so that was our first start. We did a community remembrance project where we went to every lynching site and collected the soil in that dirt, and we told the stories of those victims. And that was how we were able to start and move forward. So I am excited to know that there is change coming, but I'm also eager to know what that change will look like. And my recommendation is to start it with education because not knowing is not enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. My fellow commissioners, do we have any questions, any feedback? Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to be asking this for all of you and for all the family members and other members of the community because my role on the commission at this point is chairing the reconciliation and justice committee. So we are the ones who are going to be responsible for putting together recommendations to the general assembly and to the governor. And even though the initial draft talked about reparations, that specific language was removed so that we could get it past the general assembly. But my question to you is, what harm, specifically looking at the lynchings of James Garfield King, Matthew Williams, and the third person whose name, you know, has been lost to history, but what harms were done to the community? What were the ongoing impact of those harms on the communities? And what should justice for those harms look like at this late remove?
I'm really mad. What those harms were was the fact that there was lack of accountability. There was no accountability done, and there's absolutely no accountability happening in our county right now. There are missing black boys and black girls. There are youth who are being run away or lost in a system. There are individuals who've been incarcerated and have been lost in the system. I'm working with young adults, but I'm also working with our elders. And so incarceration has been the biggest impact when we look at our area. When we look at our area, it's to the point where a lot of people know that if you want to come home, if you're visiting the shore and you want to come home, make sure you have another driver because if you're black, you're going to get pulled over for anything and you might not make it back the weekend. In fact, when I was a UMS student, that was my first warning, was you'll probably get your first ticket when you come to UMS. So the impact is the lack of accountability furthers the fear and the domestic terrorism that this area has been able to push and keep still, and it happens with every generation. So my recommendation for that is we have to push accountability. We have to hold everyone accountable, and that includes investigations. And that includes investigations when we're talking about crime, when we're talking about murder, when we're talking about sexual abuse. There's a lot of crime that is happening in our area that is not getting investigated thoroughly. There's a lot of crime in our area that is overly getting investigated and is not being is not being pushed out equally. So we need accountability on our justice system. And it's not just with the police. We need accountability within our prosecution. We need accountability even in our public defense. We need oversight because right now, this area has been able to do what they wanted to do for too long. And that's the impact because now, young people, they don't aspire for education. They don't aspire for careers. They aspire to not be behind bars by the age of 21.
Any other questions from our commissioners?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Green. So at this time, I would like to recognize Mr. James Yamakawa of the Waukesha Truth and Reconciliation Initiative to present testimony. Thank you.
Now it works. All right, thank you very much, commissioners, members of the public. Do I do the slides? Yeah, please do mine. All right, the Waukesha Truth and Reconciliation Initiative was formed in 2019 with the first goal of getting the memorial for Matthew Williams, James Garfield King, and the Unknown onto the courthouse lawn. Just to be warned, there is some disturbing content in this part of the presentation, but we'll go on from there. Back in the 1930s, there was a flag hanging outside the NAACP headquarters in New York City. The flag stated simply, "A man was lynched yesterday." In 2015, artist Dread Scott, interesting name, was inspired to create his own piece, a similar flag, white letters on black background, saying a man was lynched by police yesterday. And I remember when Amber, Ms. Amber and I did our first protest together. It was the first Black Lives Matter protest in Salisbury. It was at a Third Friday event ironically. And when we were walking to the courthouse lawn, that's when she mentioned that she heard there was a lynching there. So I think immediately, those two things were stuck together in my mind and they haven't come apart since, for good reason. So over the years, either in the WTRI or in other organizations, we've had a couple of different issues come up. The first thing we were asked to do was go after a Confederate sign that sat on the courthouse lawn. The sign was for a General John Henry Winder, who was the Confederate Commandant for all prisoner-of-war camps east of Mississippi. Now, the man had a kind of a very tenuous connection to this area, but essentially, he was a war criminal. One of the camps that he was in charge of was Camp Sumter, otherwise known as Andersonville, where over 10,000 Union soldiers were essentially starved to death, where they were called America's First Concentration Camp. So here we have a sign to someone who fought for the cause of white supremacy on the courthouse lawn, not a stone's throw from where Matthew Williams was hung from a tree. That's not right. So we were asked to take it down. We made a petition. There was a counter petition. There are protests from local neo-Confederates, white reactionaries, including one member of the 3% movement. If you have not heard of them, look it up. And over the course of the 2017, we tried to get that taken down and we failed. It was a difficult time, but people couldn't hide from it anymore, though. And we actually had a documentary made about that process. So if you're looking for it, it's called "The Sign." So after that is when I formed the initiative, going back to the history that brought me into this work. I was there when we convinced the mayor's office to form the Salisbury Lynching Memorial Task Force. We were there when we finally put up the marker, as it's now, in a much better place than the other one, for sure. We also spent the next year after that trying to convince the mayor's office to form what amounts to a truth commission. And in late 2021 and early 2022, they finally acquiesced. Now, the issue with that being is we do not see a truth commission in Salisbury. Now, despite what Mayor Jake Day might have said in his opening remarks, I've never heard the date November 3rd. When we first got that announced, it took, actually, the press release was delayed quite a bit. Then we were told to find members to join the committee without any support from the city. People aren't going to listen to us. Finally, Dr. Chavis was able to convince the city to actually write the letters themselves. That was in May. It's now October. So I don't know if there actually is one, but I guess we'll see. Now, connecting the modern day situation with the past, what Amber talked about, education being important, is insanely important because the fact is, there are, there's a movement around the country to elect officials to local office for the express purpose of hiding this history. You may have heard the anti-CRT movement, CRT in quotes. Five local candidates in Waukesha County for Board of Education, County Council, and County Executive took a class with a Pastor David Whitney of the Institute on the Constitution. Pastor David Whitney is a Southern Poverty Law Center identified extremist, either a current or a former pastor for the Maryland chapter of the League of the South. If you don't know the League of the South, we are talking literal white supremacist organizations. They were at Charlottesville in 2017. They recently did a propaganda video in front of the Emmett Till Memorial. So that's, kind of tells you exactly who they are. These folks took a class with him, obsessively on the Maryland Constitution. The League of the South believes in secession and a white-dominated society. Now, in our efforts to uncover this and expose these ideologies, we noticed that the candidates tend to run on platforms specifically naming CRT as well as anti-LGBT issues as being their primary focus under the guise of parental choice and school choice. Now, a little more, it's more to say salient, is the case of Corporal Keith Hekuk, who was allegedly murdered in Delmar, Maryland, by a Mr. Brandon Wilkerson. Now, those of you who know this area know that people here really, 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 really love the police. So when he was killed, the mob came out. Now, I'm not talking a literal mob out there, I'm sure, well. Some of the language, I combed through over a thousand comments on a local talk radio page, and this is not all of the comments behind here, but these are some of the worst ones. People calling him a thug that should be hung, that they would like to say what they want to do to him, but that Facebook would ban them, that justice would not be done unless it was done by them. One person actually said, "We should bring back lynching just for him." The point is, this has not gone away. This is literal calls for violence against someone who had not even at that point been indicted, let alone, like, you know, had a chance to defend himself. So what we have here is evidence that this history is not past at all. Now, for recommendations, some of the recommendations that we came up with is that we need a formal apology from the city and the county and the businesses of the area for their role in the lynchings or their role in the erasure of the Georgetown neighborhood. As Dr. Chavis's work has shown, those things are connected. The full backing and support for the city of Salisbury's stalled Truth Advisory Committee. An independent study to determine the full extent of racial disparities in our areas. We all know they exist. Ms. Amber can tell you that they exist, but people need to see the data to back it up. Creation of an ongoing community fund for the black communities of Salisbury to be used towards projects determined by said communities. City and counties' full cooperation in making sure that local structures like the Chipman Cultural Center and the Houston Cemetery off of Route 50 are actually protected. The Houston Cemetery is a lovely little piece of history that is ignored often. Parts of it are being eroded away. And, well, if you don't know where it is, just drive on Route 50 and when you see the Arby's, it's right there. So they built an Arby's next to it. When they put in Route 50, they had to dig up some of those graves. And this is the, this is a local cemetery which many of Salisbury's black residents were buried. Then finally, probably the most important part, and speaking to Ms. Green's proposal for education, city and counties' full support for the introduction of educational curricula to local schools that highlights local and national black history as well as the ongoing struggle against white supremacy. It seems like we tried to take down the Winder marker right around the time that Confederate monuments were falling across the country. Now, we're talking about making sure this history gets told and not buried again at a time when there are people literally trying to bury the truth again. I don't know what it is about that, that we just get stuck with it. But if we do not tell this truth, we, as shown by some of the slides there, are going to repeat the same thing over and over and over again. I do believe that people truly do not know. There is a quote by one of my favorite authors, poet Wendell Berry. He speaks about those who finally meet their maker and they are presented with a blinding light that shames them and consoles them at the same time, that they are faced with what they have done and are consoled by what they could have done if they had only known better. And I think honestly, most people, once they know, they can't unknow what they've learned. So one of the efforts of our initiative is to tell the truth and to keep telling the truth. And to paraphrase the Gospel according to John, "You shall know the truth and the truth will set you free." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yamakawa. Wish I was more comfortable for you. To my members of the commission, do we have any questions, any comments on Mr. Yamakawa's testimony?
And I'll direct this at Mr. Yamakawa as well as Ms. Green, particularly on the education question. As an educator myself, not, not part of a state agency, but certainly one that collaborates with state agencies, including the Maryland State Department of Education and local county districts, and also somebody, you know, frankly, as a white educator who has interacted with many groups of young people throughout Maryland communities, I wonder what, you know, concrete examples of, you know, educational resources we should pursue, particularly as it relates to racial terror? How, how should topics like that be introduced into classroom discussions, for example? And should there be, you know, efforts to balance that with, you know, positive and and other stories from those communities? You know, thinking about, you know, Dr. Pinkett, for example, from UMS, you know, lifting up that story at the same time as we acknowledge and, and teach about, you know, the horrific things that happen in Maryland communities. So I would kind of pose that as a general question for the implementation of educational resources, you know, specific to the things we're talking about today.
You giving it to me?
Why?
Yeah. My mouth usually gets me in trouble, but to answer your, but to answer your question, is if we can do it with the Holocaust, then we can do it with black history? And the reason why I say that is because when I learnt about the Holocaust, I learnt, I empathized, and I wanted to make change and I wanted to make sure that that never happened to anyone. It didn't matter if I didn't want it to happen to the Jewish community or nothing specifically. I felt like that was a disgrace to the humankind. And right now, what I'm seeing is that there is a hesitancy to talk about the truth when it comes to black terror and the terror, the terrorism of the black community here in the United States. And that is because, as a country, we have not acknowledged the truth. And because we are actively trying to ignore and hide the truth, we are not giving the appropriate support to teachers. There are amazing teachers in Waukesha County who are terrified to do what they know how to do because they are scared to be, to do this. And in fact, there are teachers who work with me, who work with me in secret because they do not want to be associated with Amber Green and because they do not want their job to be in jeopardy. I am not welcome in a lot of schools. And I say this not to cause any issues, but this is the reality and this is the truth. There is no effort, there's no professional development in teaching about race and how to talk to race. When in fact, even with just talking about homelessness and saying how the disparities and showing that black youth are more, are more represented in the homeless youth population, I was told that teachers couldn't have that conversation because they weren't trained to have that conversation. That's an excuse because all the discussion questions were was, do you know if there are any resources in the community that provides resources to homeless youth? The only resource in the community for homeless youth is Phoenix Youth Project and that person who organized that was also in a Black Lives Matter protest. So you have a lot of people who are just choosing not to train, not to provide a safe space to teachers. It can be done. And to say that there needs to be a way to kind of coddle it, if we didn't coddle the Holocaust, we don't need to coddle black history.
James, I'd like to ask a question. One of the problems that Waukesha County has, we don't have black teachers. White teachers can't talk about how blacks live because they're not black. We have about 2% black teachers. I had eight children in the school system, had six of my own, and I raised my stepdaughter and my nephew. You can count on my hand how many black teachers they saw. And when you have black educators, and I'm putting this in the black community's lap, you have black educators that have retired, what do they have to lose now to step up to the plate to let us know what our children has gone through in the school system? They, they, they tore down Salisbury High School many years ago and I was traumatized because of integration. And one thing, I went on the bus, I believe in getting involved to get to the rest of the story. And one thing, I went on the bus, I believe in getting involved to get to the rest of the story. So I rode on the bus, these group of teachers, all white. And they were talking how they systematically set up our children to fail before they even get into kindergarten. So I never went to kindergarten, but I was in academics. I never went to kindergarten, couldn't have kindergarten when I was going to school back in the 50s, you know, they didn't have kindergarten. But I'm saying, when you have educators and then you have us as black people go along with the system. That's sad. So I think we need to educate, I've been educated the whole time I met Dr. Chavis Amber and James introduced me. And that's been a blessing because I didn't talk, we didn't talk about the lynching. Somebody come to me, I was sheltered from all that stuff because they didn't talk about negativity. I was always around positive things, you know, uh, but I knew things were wrong until when Martin Luther King, uh, was assassinated, got involved in the civil rights stuff. But right now, we need to educate the adults. And we have all these sororities and fraternities, you don't see them, Chipman Cultural Center, you don't see them, um, that could help. And you have to get, uh, Dr. Chavis to come and nurture us and teach us how to, to go forward. But we have people right here that's smart and could educate our children. We don't have to educate them in the school system, you have to educate them in churches. You talk about Jesus, talk about black history.
Well, story, uh, the first week that, uh, the Legacy Museum down in Montgomery, Alabama opened. I took my family down to see, uh, the soil, jars of soil that, um, we collected in 2017. My daughter, it was one of the pictures, um, Amber showed was, uh, the soil collection and little red haired girl was my daughter, Sarah, who's now 15. So I'm sitting, I'm standing there with my wife and three kids in this museum and there was a young black lady, probably college aged, um, just kind of staring at us. And it got real uncomfortable because I'm like, it was like good like 10 minutes just staring at us. She eventually came over and said, "Thank you for bringing your kids here." So I agree that we need to teach our kids because the reason, main reason why I do this is because I don't want my kids to have to take 30, 35 years to learn this like I did. But I do not agree that it can't be in our schools. Um, we have resources, Dr. Chavis's book, The Silent Shore is a good one. Uh, Cheryl Eiffel's On the Courthouse Lawn, uh, The Works of Lynda Dewire. We have, uh, Mob Law on Delmarva, Around the Pond, sources, documents about the Georgetown neighborhood. This is history that belongs in our schools. Not just, but not even just the local stuff, the national stuff. I'm pretty sure that we skipped from slavery right to MLK when I was growing up. Like, nothing happened in that, like, you know, 80, 90, 100 years. Like, I'm pretty dang sure a lot happened. And that's what, the reason why I, I, I made sure to bring those candidates up is because there are people who are trying to make sure that this stuff is never talked about. And it's not just like, you know, like, you know, white people feeling uncomfortable. It's talking about people literally running on platforms of, "We are going to hide this again so you do not have to be uncomfortable." So, yeah, there, there, there are resources out there. The, I'm probably going to get someone angry at this 1619 project, I'm going to bring that one up. There are educational resources with that geared towards high school students, as well as the Equal Justice Initiative has a whole curricula for high school students based on examining America's history of white supremacy through the lens of racial terror lynching. Or they could just read a book. But the point is, our kids, and like, and like, again, my daughter, 2017, 34, 10 years old, in that photo. She can handle it. All my kids can handle it. Everyone's kids can handle it in some fashion or another. Our kids are stronger than we give them credit for. They can handle this. So can we, we're adults.
Any other questions, uh, comments from our commissioners? All right, well, she already did a good job of introducing herself, but I will officially recognize Ms. Shani Shields of, uh, the Charles Chipman Cultural Center.
As many of you who know me personally, I do have a big mouth and I love to talk. And I want to say this, I, uh, was sitting over there and I could feel, believe it or not, Mrs. Chipman and my cousin Elaine Brown, who drug me in to become a member in 1985 to the Chipman Foundation. And I've been affiliated with it ever since, I'm currently the president. And also I want to say, I'm proud to be a Pinkett. My maiden name is Pinkett. And I'm so proud of that name because it lets me know I feel like I'm carrying on the legacy of the Pinkett family. Um, Mrs. Chipman, I didn't know she was a Pinkett until 1983 when she started having family reunions because the P stood for Pinkett, I never knew what the P stood for. And she's a distant relative of somebody in the Pinkett family, uh, generations or whatever. But they were vocal and believed in preserving our, our, our history. And, um, this building here, I think we passed all brochures. I attended the, I was attending this church before I was born because this was the family church. Um, Elijah Pinkett was one of the founders of, of, of the, um, the original, uh, structure. And, um, from the, the lessons that we had when we first started the restor, restoration of the project, it was held by one rod, the roof was, and if it had caved in, we would not have been able to restore that. So we had to raise, uh, we had a, a, a fund from Maryland Historical Trust, $150,000. And then we had to raise $150,000. So we formed a committee and the committee I had was dedicate the windows. But this building is the only building left in the city of Salisbury to let our children know that we had done something positive in this community. Everything else has been destroyed, and I mean literally destroyed. Um, we talk about the Downtown Plaza. Downtown Plaza, that was never downtown, it was uptown. You cross the bridge, that was downtown. You cross the bridge now, everything is wiped out except for the hotel. Which now they got the restaurants and everything and no, all the businesses down there are white. And they have, do have a dog park where Dixie Bargain and Miss Vida Moore's, um, places were, they have a dog park there now. It just angers me when I see the entertainment district that they destroyed. Georgetown, my great grandfather Charlie Pinkett, he lived where we have the garden now, uh, a community garden. And he was the politician of the neighborhood because every time it was time to vote, he'd knock on doors. And he was campaigning for John Cannon's daddy, Mr. Bob Cannon. But he got involved in community and politics. My grandfather, uh, James Stanley Pinkett and Mr. Howard Purnell and, uh, Howard Leonard, they were working at the hotel at the time of the lynching and they were told to go up on the roof and look at it. And he got word in the California section of the black community, uh, to stay, like they said, stay off the streets because they were afraid they would come up into the neighborhoods. There was two sections, Georgetown was one of the first black sections of the community. And then there was California and California was named California because it was land opportunity. That's where I basically grew up, um, until we, when they put the highway through, as they talked about the highway, taking houses and everything, Route 50. I moved in Jersey Heights. And then unfortunately in 19, the late 90, the 90, early 1990s, they put another bypass through on Jersey Road that took some houses also. So this is a tradition and it's a systematic things. And I think black people need to get involved in, um, the political arena, that's why I run. Because they have plans, something called comprehensive, uh, uh, comprehensive plan. It's like a 20-year plan, every year they have to do it. We need to know what the plans are for us, for our community. Unless we don't, when we don't get involved, this is what happens. This is what happens, we have these kind of meetings. We, we can't be afraid to speak out. And I'm not afraid to speak out. I may be laid back sometime, but I'm getting older now, but I'm not afraid to speak out. The Chipman Cultural Center, I want to thank James and Amber for introducing me to Dr. Chavis. He's been a great asset to us. He's, he's linked us with someone who's done our website, which we'll be launching soon. Um, I gave you a little placard, we got to update this, uh, this was donated to us, uh, by one of our members, past members. And, um, everybody got it, I think they passed it out, yeah. I thought I brought it, I brought it some with me, yeah. But anyway, what we're trying to do now, um, we want to collect, we're collecting things, we have things already that they're putting together and so it can last forever, so people can come in and look at their history. Basically what I want, I want pictures of your family. Your family, copies of, of your, your family, your, the fam, the person's history. We need to change the look to talk about people who have accomplished stuff in our county. Um, the Chipman Center originally was in Worcester County, the deed was Worcester County because there was only two counties, Dorchester and Somerset. That's why some of the Pinkets are down Somerset and in Dorchester, I'm related to all of them. Um, but, uh, I just want to say that we're here and we do have schools, Amber, but they're young children. First grade, the last tour I did was for first graders in the high school, what am I going to do with first graders talking about black history? So what I did, we had some scrapbooks that Mrs. Chipman did and we showed pictures of how people dressed. And my cousin was a Tuskegee Airmen, uh, Wilmore Leonard. And, um, he grew up on Broad Street. And we had a picture of him and one of the nurses and, and, um, I found, we had a picture of a black gentleman, uh, in the building, I didn't know who he was, one of the parents came. So I was lucky to have the parents there also to educate them on some of the pictures. They loved, the children loved pictures. And we have fourth grade from North Salisbury, they, they come, uh, because of pandemic, they haven't been recent, but before school closed this year, we had first graders. And I said, "What am I going to tell first graders, you know, about black history?" But it worked, the, the passing out the scrapbooks and everything worked because it was a pictorial history of the past. Um, as they said, Frederick Douglass Kane and, uh, uh, son of the, um, Courthouse Lawn. And that's in the late 1890s, upstairs was built, um, for us. Now we are in the process of restoring, uh, you'll see us always working on the building and Maryland Historical Trust gives us grants. We're attempting to raise $60,000, uh, because the roof is a cedar roof. And you cannot, you cannot, because it's a historical building, put anything else on the roof but cedar. Cedar is very expensive. So if any of you all know any rich people out in the neighbor, community, uh, we're asking for, uh, a donation because we do need the roof fixed. Um, and I think it hasn't been put on, a roof hasn't been put on since it was restored. So, um, it's a constant thing for us. We're having, the reason why we have events, uh, baby showers and, um, wedding rehearsals, um, birthday parties is to raise our operational costs. All the board members are volunteers. We do not get paid. And you know, when it says volunteer, it means you're volunteering your services. So I've been, the board has been blessed with Dr. Chavis is on our board, Ian Post is on our board, uh, Dr. Ashton Garcia is on our board, uh, Stephanie Conway, who's our, our good treasurer. I'm on the board, Herbie Fletcher, who does, uh, is getting ready to do another white party and give us a donation, I saw him the other day. But I have a realm of people that is diverse, uh, as you hear Garcia, Hispanic. Uh, um, Stephanie is an Indian Hispanic. Um, we have white members, black members. I need a, uh, I'm looking for a diverse community to talk about their history also. And we want to do exhibits, like we're talking about opening it on Sundays where we can have exhibits to stress the history of our people in our community. And I'm a positive person, lynching was terrible, but I, like I said, I was sheltered from that. I wasn't even exposed to racism because I went to everything that we had. We had people, black people with businesses. I didn't have to go uptown really except for to go to Mangels or RE Pals or somewhere where you shop, buy some clothes. But we had our restaurants, we had our dime stores, we had our drugstores, grocery stores down there, um, hair salons. We had everything right downtown, the clubs, the movie theater, um, right down in that little section of, of Lake Street. And I think that, um, when they integrated our community, was that good or bad? Because when they integrate our community, we destroyed the businesses because we lacked, we stopped supporting, the black community stopped supporting their business because they could go to Johnson's Sammons or English Grill, uh, or, or other restaurants. They didn't think about the others that, uh, Melvin Sample, Cherie Sample, he was grandfather had a restaurant, Melvin Jimmy's Restaurant. They didn't think about those restaurants anymore. And, um, I love living where Cynthia lives. Cynthia lives in California. I would never have moved, but when I lost the election, I moved to my home, I grew up on Jersey Road, that's in the county. But I love living over there, I wasn't afraid to live over there. I love the people over there. Um, and, uh, we need to, people need to tour, the, our, people need to come and feel comfortable in their neighborhood. I, I deal with street people sometime, I like talking to the boys on the corner, uh, uh, because they're someone's sons or daughters. And they're people too. And I learned, me and, me and Amber, we debate, well, we, I'm old, she's young. So we have our differences a little bit, but I learned some things from her and I'm hoping she learned a little bit from me. Um, because some people were giving her the wrong history of downtown, I started going downtown at seven. I'm talking about Lake Street at seven because my daddy was a cab driver. So he, I, he had me in the cab with him, he did that part-time. But learning from old, learning from each other can help one another. We learn, because I didn't know anything about all this lynching, because I said, "Why are we talking about lynching? I'm tired hearing about it." I just, I actually said that. I'm tired of hearing about lynching, lynching, you know, I didn't want to hear about it. And because I want to think positive, you know, I'm trying to uplift it. When I read, you know, started listening to what he said, "Really? Really?" And then I talked to Warren White, I didn't know this, they had a Negro Bible, slave Bible. Does anybody know that? They had a Negro slave Bible where they took all the words of oppression and slavery out of the Bible. I didn't know that. I learned that this year, you know, by talking to Warren, I introduced, um, Dr. Chavis to Warren White. And they had a good time talking, I had to leave him, I had to go home, go to bed. But anyway, um, anyone that's interested in touring, who's never been to Chipman Center, um, you can call me, contact me and I'd be happy to give you a tour of not only the Chipman Center, but also the neighborhoods, because it's one thing I do also. I give people a tour of, of, an historical tour of Georgetown Church Street, California, Jersey Road, Indian Reservation, where they're building new houses now. I give them a true picture of the community. And that's what I, I love doing, that, that new pastor that comes, especially St. Paul, because my great grandfather was one of the founders of St. Paul, that's one of the churches they had to relocate, like First Baptist. Because those churches came out of John Wesley. First Baptist and, and, uh, St. James and St. Paul, they came out of, because the Chipman Center was the first school, first church and meeting place for blacks. And I think that's all, anybody having questions for me, I hope not, but anyway.
My co-commissioners, any questions?
Yes. Oh, okay, hope I can answer it.
People get excited on the ground because there's something that's going to happen and those, my, my family and the community is in the room.
Okay.
Would your center be interested in hearing stories about Buffalo Soldiers? Because I am.
Yes. I was a member once with Miss, Miss, um, what's her latest?
Velma.
Velma, yeah, Miss Velma.
That's my aunt.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay, yeah. I was a Buffalo Soldier and I, my cousin, Wilmore, uh, Pete, William Peters.
Right.
He was a member.
Right.
He was a big.
Morgan Grant.
Yeah, yeah, he was a member. So yes, I want information about that and what we want to do in exhibit, we want to put things like on a screen, you said a screen where you could talk about it. Flash thing, you know, and I don't know all this technology stuff. But you know, you know how they do at funerals when they show people stuff, when they But you know, you know how they do at funerals when they show people stuff when they were young? We want to do that. Yeah, we want to do that. So that would be very good. Yes, I want that.
I just recently, for the, I'm a member. I live in Newark, Delaware. So no, you won't see me down here every other weekend. But I do have a six-minute little clip that I put together. And I can put it on flash drive and mail it to you.
I'll give you my address.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm very interested in that because there's other history besides just Salisbury history. I like to get into Tippin and naturally, I've been talking to Mr. Quentin down in Sharp Town, you know, about the school and everything. And she mentioned San Domingo. So I want to get other people's histories. That's not the Salisbury blacks I'm interested in. I'm interested in the whole history of the county. Since, you know, we're in the county, so we need to have the black history. Because there's people that ancestors living with Tippin and Whitehaven and Byville, Nanticoke. I need to know a little bit about those and have that displayed also in Chipman. That's the future that we want to do. But yes, I'd be willing to get, I want that information.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. She's appreciative. If you want to, you want to say a bit?
Thank you again, Ms. Sheels. At this time, I would like to recognize again a descendant of Garfield King, Ms. Latania Christopher.
Hello, everyone. Again, I'm in agreeance with Amber Green and James with education. Education is important. I have a 13-year-old disabled son who attends schools in Wycomical County. And it's very important that he learns more than just slavery. I just want to speak my piece on my ancestor and what happened to him. The savages that lynched my great-great uncle Garfield did not wear a mask and was calling each other by name during this heinous act. However, no one was identified. The ruthless mobs were all together. And the lynching was obviously approved by the individuals who were of the law. That's why his lynching was carried out on the courthouse lawn, which was the jail in 1898. Garfield King was in police custody and jailed at the courthouse building today, which was the jail in 1898. He was in a jail cell in Wycomical County, which is governed by the state of Maryland. The lynch mob gained access to Garfield while in police custody. What happened to his protection? Garfield was buried in an unknown land and never had a proper burial. As I mentioned earlier, my ancestors didn't even retrieve the body because of fear of something was going to happen to them. We, the family of Garfield King, would like to resume his body and give him the burial he so deserved. The state of Maryland is ultimately responsible for the lynching and death of my ancestor, James Garfield King. No one, to this day, 124 years later, has been held accountable. Who goes into a jail and is dragged out and lynched on the courthouse, on the jail lawn? But nobody was identified. The King family deserves justice. We deserve justice in the form of reparations for this heinous act of terror lynchings on our ancestors, James Garfield King in Wycomical County. We are silent no more. Our family has been in fear and terrorized for 124 years. Nothing has been done by the state of Maryland. And he was in the state of Maryland's custody when this happened to him. If that would have happened today, the families would be compensated. So we, the family of Garfield King, deserves the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christopher. Any questions? Feedback, comment from fellow commissioners? I'll just say, yeah, I agree. For whatever that means, I agree wholeheartedly. The points you brought up are valid. At the very least, and I truly mean the very least, James Garfield King deserves a proper burial. Your family deserves an official chance to mourn. I can speak from experience with my father being able to officially say goodbye to his father because he died in Nigeria. And my father was in the United States. It was almost 30 years later that he officially had the chance to mourn his father. So you're right, time changes nothing in a lot of ways. And I think for the healing of your family, that's the least the state of Maryland can do. So thank you. So due to time constraints, because we are quickly approaching one o'clock, that just shows how much needed to be shared during this time. The reading of the statement from Deborah Jean will not happen, but we will enter her testimony into the record. I do repeat, we will enter that into the record. We just do want to be mindful of time. But again, that will be into the record. So I do want to thank everyone who provided their testimony for the opportunity for us to listen to your stories. I love the connection that just happened right here. That's, yeah, like real talk, that's what this is all about. There are a lot of common themes that I heard amongst the testimony, the importance of education, the importance of understanding the totality of what transpires in this space. And certainly, the MLTRC wants to do everything in its power to help cultivate that change. So at this time, we do want to transition, being mindful of time, to the final phase of our hearing session, which is the time for a public comment. So at this time, I do want to recognize Commissioner Dr. Iris Barnes, who will read the public comments that have been submitted to the MLTRC by email during the course of this hearing session. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Fakunle. To just remind us, questions and comments must be limited to the topic of discussion for today's hearing. If your comment question is off-topic, it will not be included in the hearing. Comments and questions should be presented with quorum and the respect appropriate for conducting this public hearing. Any comments or questions containing obscene language or language inciting imminent violence will not be addressed. Finally, please note that members of the media may be present during today's hearing. And as such, public comments and questions may be broadcast or printed by news outlets. We received one question from the public here today from Stephen Feliciano, who is a member of the City of Salisbury's Human Rights Advisory Committee. He states, "The preamble states, 'Restorative justice requires full knowledge, understanding, and acceptance of the truth before there can be any meaningful reconciliation.'" His question is, "Is there a place for forgiveness in the reconciliation process? And does it begin with self before it can begin within the community?" And I guess that question is to the commissioners? Or anyone who wants to respond?
I will just provide a brief response and certainly want to make some time as best we can to our descendants in particular. I think that last question, honestly, is made for y'all. I'm not even going to respond. So I will, whoever wants to respond to that question, is forgiveness a part of this process? I think certainly, as a commission, we want to forgive. And the one thing I've learned is forgiveness is not for the person who perpetrated. The forgiveness is for you to begin the process of releasing that pain. But I do want to hear from the descendants. So I'm looking at you, Latania, if you want to speak on behalf of your family. Is forgiveness a part of this process for you?
Yes, it is. Forgiveness is not, it's for me and for our family to heal. As I stood there and said that, the feelings and emotions that I experienced let me know that we haven't healed. However, in order to heal, we have to forgive. And through all life trials, I've had to forgive, to move on, to grow. However, Maryland, the state of Maryland has a job to do. And we can heal. We can forgive. But how was this allowed to be 124 years that we needed to heal? My family, as I look back on my grandmother, Mary King, she was so untrusting. She was, she lived in fear of people. Why? Because of what happened to her ancestor. And in order for us to heal, we need the state of Maryland to take responsibility for allowing this to happen. He had no trial, even though they said at the mortician's home, something was done. That is not a proper way to have a trial. And yes, I understand that he shot Mr. Kenny. He was innocent until proven guilty. What happened to him protecting himself? Because we all know the KKK was in the trap, Maryland, in the 1800s. We know that. They're still there. They're in Wycomical County. They're here. We cannot heal unless, until it's brought to the forefront. We hold these people accountable. What was he supposed to allow? Somebody to beat him up and torture him? No, he protected himself. And he didn't, he did not deserve, he did not get the proper treatment in having a trial, being found guilty, none of that. Because the white community took it upon themselves to lynch him. And until the state of Maryland take responsibility for his death, we can no longer, we can't heal. Somebody needs to take responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and just to take that to the next level is that this is, one of the important things about this is our family cared and care enough to hold a society accountable, even though it happened 120-some years. As a 74-year-old great-grandmother, my point with this is I want my grandchildren to know her family, all of our families are sacred. And if we do not honor our ancestors, we do not honor those babies we bring home from the hospital. So when my granddaughter sees, I don't like speaking in an audience, but there's time that we have to do things that make us uncomfortable. This is how we are going to be able to fix our schools. Because our children are seeing, well, it must not be that important. Nobody talks about it. So that's, that's the focus on not just about what happened to him, but when we hold a society accountable for our pain, people are not so quick to take a life and cover it up and think, I don't have to be answered to that. Well, we are a family that we care. And we don't just care about our babies and our ancestors. We are also trying to teach other young people, you matter. And that's what that's about. You matter, you matter, you matter, we matter. And if we want our children to behave in school, we got to let them know they matter. Thank you.
When we're talking about forgiveness, I look at it from a young person perspective. And I look at it from stages of grief. The state of Maryland is grieving because we have been dealing with trauma and we have not been addressing trauma for some time. And if we know the stages of grief, there's denial, then there's anger. We keep teeter-tottering with denial and we keep teeter-tottering with anger. And we are not moving forward. And so when to ask, is forgiveness part of the healing? Or is forgiveness part of it? Yes. But why are we rushing to forgive when we are not even acknowledging what has happened? We are not giving ourselves accountability. We're not giving ourselves the space to really feel the raw emotions. And so honestly, I feel like the state of Maryland has been gaslighting the black community for a long time. And every time when we get to the point and we move through those stages of grief, people get uncomfortable. And they always want to combat the action by saying, well, don't you have to forgive? I can forgive, but I do not have to forget. I can forgive, but that doesn't mean I slow down my pace to make change. And so forgiveness is part of the process, but we cannot rush the process. We have to go through every stage of grief. And the state of Maryland is refusing to grieve. And by doing that, a lot of young people are suffering. And so I can forgive, but it's not my point right now. It's not my place to forgive. I know it's on the horizon, but right now, I'm angry. Right now, I want things done. And you're going to feel these raw emotions because I need to do that. I need to move past that.
I was born and raised Catholic. So for those of you who are familiar with the Catholic Church, you know about the sacrament of reconciliation or confession or sacrament of penance in the old school, right? Well, I mean, the way that sacrament works is, yes, you go and you confess your sins. The priest gives you an absolution, but that's conditional on the performance of one's penance. So there are a couple of things there. First, there is that recognition that you have done something wrong. First, there is that recognition that you have done something wrong. Right? You know, but as done in that, that, the act of contrition, right? I, you know, it's like, I am heartily sorry for having offended you, and I detest all my sins because of your just punishments, but most of all, because I offend you, my God, who are all goodness ever given of my love. I firmly resolve, with the help of thy grace, to sin no more and to avoid the near occasions of sin. Well, if we talk about lynching, if we talk about racism and all of this as, you know, it seems like broader society here, the state of Maryland, wants absolution without penance. And I, you know, it's like, again, that's kind of hard to talk about forgiveness. Yes, we can talk about, you know, the need for the individual and all of that for the healing process, yes. But for there to be that reconciliation, there has to be a recognition, there has to be action, there has to be that penance. What's that penance going to look like? That's, I think, a large part of what we have to determine, and will sort of work its way into the recommendations. But we gotta, we gotta think about, you know, if you're talking forgiveness, you have to have that accountability piece in there. And, you know, yes, that's going to take any number of forms, so I will stop and shut up since, you know, we're at time.
Thank you, everyone, for providing your insight on that very important question. And I will say, it's given me a lot more clarity. So again, being mindful of time, because we approaching that one o'clock deadline. What I will do right now is just give special recognition and gratitude, first to Mayor Jake Day for the video, for the intro to Salisbury University, for hosting this hearing session. A special call-out to Creston Long and the PAC4 videography team. Most importantly, to the descendants. Thank you for trusting us. We hope that we, seriously, thank you for trusting us, and we hope that we are doing everything in our capacity to honor your ancestor in the way they should be honored. We don't want to just focus on their end. We want to focus on the life that they live, because just as much as their death matters to this overall tapestry of racial terrorism, their lives matter too. And we certainly want to honor that. So thank you all again. Before we officially accept all the testimony that we have heard during this hearing session, I do want to recognize Vice Chair Charles Chavis, if you have any final remarks. He's good, okay, he's good. Thank you, Vice Chair Chavis, again, for all your incredible work. Oh, he's good, you don't want to say nothing. He just said, I'm looking at him, he's saying, no, he's good. He's good, yeah, he's done, he did what he had to do. Okay, so I'll keep my remarks short. So it was an interesting drive from Baltimore to the Eastern Shore. Something about crossing that bridge and doing that at like six something in the morning. You know, it was interesting. I've been down the Eastern Shore many times, so I'm very familiar, certainly, with the space, and it's beautiful. Like, I thought about that too, man, it's like, we could focus on the beauty of the space instead of the racism once in a while, that'd be nice. But thinking about our two known victims, James Garfield King, Matthew Williams, our unidentified victim, it's very common themes that we saw. They had no benefit of the doubt. I think one of the lasting remnants of this, or prevailing remnants of this system of racism is lack of benefit of the doubt. And I tell this story very quickly, just because I want to emphasize the point. You never know what stories people are carrying with them when you interact with them. And here's a story that I was carrying. For eight months of this year, while as Chair of this commission and all the other things that I've been doing, I was dealing with two charges of misdemeanors for a crime that I did not commit. It was not until this Monday, this past Monday, that those charges were officially dropped. So for eight months, I had plenty of time to think about what could possibly happen to me. And I eventually saw the footage of the actual perpetrator of the crime and me, as you could imagine. There weren't a lot of similarities between the two of us, except we were big, we were black, we had locks, and we were wearing a black top. So the employees at CBS, the detective at the Anarono County Police Department, the Assistant State's Attorney for Anarono County knew nothing of my story. They didn't know I have a PhD from Johns Hopkins. They didn't know I was seen to be a professor at Morgan State University, they didn't know about my wife. They didn't know about my son. They didn't know about how much I've dedicated my life to justice, to truth, to healing, to peace. In that moment, none of that mattered. I, the great David Fakunle, had no benefit of the doubt in the system. And for eight months, all I had to think about is what would happen if for some possible reason, they found me guilty? Well, here's what could have happened, up to three years in prison, away from my family, away from this commission, away from all the work that I've done, just because I was in the wrong place at the wrong time doing, in their minds, the wrong thing, which was just legally buying gift cards. So I couldn't help but to think of other victims. I couldn't help but to think of how good they looked, how hard they worked, what they strive for. Because in my way, I'm trying to do the same thing, to honor them, to go further than I knew they couldn't go, to take every opportunity I had to show what I could possibly be. And just like that, it could have been all taken away. So it humbled me, it really did. It reminded me that, yes, no matter what I've done in this world, I am still black in the United States of America. And that's the problem. That's the problem. So where do we go from here? I will tell you like we tell everybody else, do what you can. Do what you can, but above all else, and I thank you all for doing this, thank you, Amber, thank you, James, thank you, Latania, thank you to everyone, you told your story. And we got it recorded. So now we get to share that story wherever this commission goes, and you will see us in two weeks in Somerset County, so we'll be right back on this show. I will be taking that trip across that bridge once again to tell this story again. Because that's where we have to start, is with the truth. The truth will set us free, I truly believe that, James. Now, the truth can be ugly, it can hurt, and there are things we have to navigate, but we have to tell the truth, and so we will. And so I thank you all for contributing to this story of the Maryland Lynching Truth and Reconciliation Commission. So at this time, I would like to move that we accept the testimony, the insight, the wisdom that we heard from the people on this day. Is there a second? So moved, and there it is. Can't take it back now. So with that, again, I thank you all for your time and your energy. Anything that you want us to have a part of this story, please reach out to us, we are here. Dr. Chavis, he's a rock star, so y'all know y'all can get him. Reach out to us again, mltrc@marlin.gov. This is not the end, this is just the beginning. We only getting started. Everything that we heard, we will take into consideration and help guide us in this process. So I do want to acknowledge again, Living and Growing. Please, if there's anything that you want to process, if there's any debriefing that you want to do with Living and Growing, please utilize that wisdom, please utilize that space. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.